Workshop, are we online? Are we? No. Okay, then I'll call this city commission workshop which duly posted to order. And. First item, which is some communication input, do we have any?
Yes, fair, we have one and it's Mr. Ron Losano, twenty four ten Riverside Drive would like to speak on the topic of destination park.
Recently, I noted that collegiality was a historical reality in Harlingen even after contentious elections. This agenda item strikes as one where another three weeks makes little difference in the scheme of things to build a better Harlingen. Weather is inhibiting outdoor activity, but more fairly stated. A new commissioner is scheduled to be onboard this month. So it seems that the elected concerned citizen commissioner should have input in such a large expenditure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that signed up?
No, ma'am.
All right, so item one is to hear presentations from the following three firms present the cities request for qualifications twenty twenty one dash zero eight. Where the design project management wants to kill destination park phase two. How are we going to do this?
Evening, Mayor, City Commission. We have the three firms and so what we did was we chose numbers right before the meeting. And so Janak is the first architect that we do in their presentation. And then we'll bring in the next ones as soon as they're up. We'll have fifty minute presentations with a five minute question and answer. And then we'll move on to the next one.
One minute question and answer. We're gonna make our five thirty, just like getting started. Or you can give time or you give us time back, answer questions. Welcome. Thank you all for being here today.
Thank you, Mayor.
Introduce yourselves and.
Okay, well, I know you have time constraints, so keep it within your time constraint. My name is Raymond Janak, which is an architect.
I'm James, who may as well have assistance.
We appreciate the opportunity to be here and we're going to show you some of our work as we go through here and our experience in parks and. James is a landscape architect and planner who we feel brings a lot to the team. As far as parks are concerned, I these are, we're a thirty year old firm, we have a lot of, actually, our first projects were with the city of Harlingen and the school district in Harlingen, so it's a special place for us.
It's a real brief app associates, I believe we, y'all may know some of our folks, we work with y'all occasionally. Have associates has been around for seventy plus years. We've been in the Rio Grande Valley for a little over twenty five. We are a lot of engineers primarily, but we also have planners, landscape architects. We did a lot of parking recreation, open space master plans and a lot of parks. Have in general really focused on public sector projects and on the planning and landscape architecture side, it's almost always parks that we work on. Me specifically, I've spent thirty years in parks and recreation, twenty of that is in public sector, all the way up to Parks and Recreation Director. Doing what I love is designing and building parks, here to help bring.
So we're not going to read these to you because of time, but we have, these are, between half and Janak, these are the park projects we've done throughout South Texas and throughout Texas, actually, but most of them in South Texas. And we'll show you some of these as we go through. Janak and half are not a marriage of convenience. We've been working together for about twenty years. We've done several parks, including Cameron County, East of Lanka. Several in Corpus Christi, we're doing a ten year master plan for the entire park system in Corpus Christi right now together. The McCallell Convention Center and various other parks and actually an amphitheater experience, we did the amphitheater at East of Park. He's a rock a park overlooking Dalton Cove. We're currently doing a similar sized amphitheater to yours, about three million dollars at Eagle Pass, Maverick County and several others. And this is our team, Nick Janak, who's not here, Trey Murray and Robert Science. We have, one of the things we're trying to get across to you in fifteen minutes is we have the experience. We're qualified to do this project. We've done several of them and we are here. We have an office in Harlingen. Like I said, our first projects were for the city of Corpus Christi and and so we understand the projects, we understand amphitheaters and terrace seating and there's various different types of seating for an amphitheater, anywhere from grass to fixed seats to combination of portable seating. And so on and so forth. We'll try and show you some examples and we, and we know the, we know the site. Actually represented the city of Harlingen as a competitive swimmer over here at Lawrence ago. If you don't fall in love with a project you can't afford. So that's what we think our responsibility is to make sure that whatever we design for you, you can afford within your budget. And these are samples from two million dollars to a hundred and fifty million dollars of projects where budgets on the left hand side, the final cost is on the right. We just bid a project at South Texas Independent School District, it was eight me, eight point two million, it came in at seven point eight.
One of those things I want to point out too is that Remma just mentioned, you don't want to get married to a project you can't afford. Part of our responsibility is to be honest with you, tell you what you can handle. We know the construction data, we know that, we have the experience, we're going to be a part of it, we got to be honest with you. We want to have the discussion, people go out there, bid it and find out if you don't have.
And so an additional part of that is our experience doing parks and also in operations. So we bring what we call the more process, we look at maintenance operations, revenues, expenditures. Your total cost of the park is much more than capital. The, the cost of operations are going to exceed your capital costs for years to come. So with each opinion and probable cost, we look at manpower, we look at the cost of operation and provide you that information so that you go in fully.
So we have some quality and this is East La Blanca Park that we did together. We did the pavilions and the amphitheater mini convention center at Dolphin Dock. The, the right hand side photo. Amphitheater was very successful.
That, that pavilion, that amphitheater actually was designed with spaces in mind. They actually sit there and have a really nice view and all of them, so it became very popular. This, the county, using that facility for conservancy, it wasn't the intent originally, but they liked it so much and so successful we're using it for that as well.
And these are the various elements, I won't read them to you because of time that go into those surveys. This is a new amphitheater, we're, we're complete, we're under construction on in Maverick County, which is Eagle Pass. It is exactly your budget. Which is about three million dollars. The McCallell Convention Center is one that we're really proud of. It, it seems like yesterday, but it's going on fifteen plus years old. This is, this was a park that was in master planned a hundred acres and we we met, we did the park in about thirty five, forty acres and it's got a little mini amphitheater that's very well used. You can see the quality of the landscape architecture that we were able to do there. I know it's McCallen, but I was just going to show it. Off the list. This is a bayfront park, which is very successful in Corpus Christi. See, it has water features and lots of landscape. This is another park. Waters Edge Park, it's called. These are trails in a park we did in Port Aransas, Texas.
The one on the left is a park that we're actually looking at right now. Want to see what's the sports complex, it's got the massive kind of soccer fields, but they're kicking things instead of three baseball fields. Small amphitheater up as well, and there's a big ticket. It also has a splash pad that's basically, basically parts.
Is that an existing park or is? But so as I mentioned before, half associates, we, we focus on parks and we've done a lot of amphitheaters, there's three of them here, I'll show you. One thing that we do when we come into a new park project and amphitheater specifically is we look at the context and the history of the site. So Long Hill Park or Fair Park, as it was called at one time. There's a lot of history there, a lot of history in Harlingen, a lot of history with, with park there. Examples of how we incorporate that into the context and history. This is Row Yard Park and Walks the Hatchie. You can't really see in the background, but there's a trestle bridge. And so some of the trestle components or the, the appearance of that is actually in the vertical and, and horizontal members of the amphitheater itself. And then there's also other rail themes that go throughout. The next one is, is Town Park and Walnut Trail in Mansfield. That was the site of the original mill on Walnut Creek. And so throughout there, including at the amphitheater, you've got the millstone concept that's carried throughout the entire park. And then the last one is, is something that is not built yet, but we've designed as part of a Lakewood Park. We just finished the first phase of that full park. But we did a, we did an amphitheater, they're trying to, to, to get the funding together to do that. But it, that basically it plays off the site, off the lake of orientation, a small lead focuses everything to the, to the lake. And then spreads out and that's the, the design theme, the concept that the amphitheater covered, so. So there's just a few examples of, of parks.
I mean, basically you're not taking a gamble with us. We have a lot of experience in parks and we have a lot of history in the valley, in Texas. Talking about some future projects and some of the smaller parks. I think we want to speak out and find out. We have the experience, we're trying to show you in ten minutes or less that we are qualified to do this project. We know, we know the parks, we know amphitheaters, we know the operation of parks, we just next step that we get to go. We're going to put our name on it, we're going to care. The job being responsible is just as important.
One of, one of the things we'll, we'll do is fortunate enough to work with you, we will actually come to City Hall or wherever you designate. The original concepts and the, the original schematic design, you in the room, whether that be you, this mission or that again, administration. In other words, when I go back to office, thirty days later, if we think, when it comes here, to City Hall or wherever you designate, we're not going to leave.
Very good. All right. Does that conclude your formal presentation? Thank you. All right. Does anybody have any questions? Any questions? All right. Well, thanks again for being here and we're going to discuss this during the regular part of our meeting at five, our regular meeting, which starts at five thirty. Thank you.
Can we approach it at least this presentation?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks again. Okay, well, welcome. You can you have fifteen minutes and then you may have some, may have some questions for you, but let's go ahead and introduce yourselves. We'll get started. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you all for giving us the time, a full hour for three architects. I know y'all's day is very busy. But this is an important project. We think it's very important. It's a it's once in a generational, I think, to do something like this, so it's important to us. We're, we're very thankful just to be here to present to you today. I'm Mike Alex, R O F A Architects. Luis Figueroa is my partner and, and Daniel Alvarez is, is our associate. And we'd like to thank you for giving us this time. I'll start with catching my breath and coming up the stairs. I'll start with who we are very quickly. And, and our team for this project, we've, because I think it is important project. We have all three principles in our firm who are licensed architects who will play a role in your project. And we're all local. I'm from Harlingen. I live in Harlingen. Luis is in Mac Allen and Daniel is here in Harlan, in Harlingen too. Seventy four years of experience. There's, there's no firm that has the, the type of experience. Luis and I were trying to count the, the years combined. That's over a hundred years of architectural service in the Rio Grande Valley from the three principals, each of us having thirty or forty years here in the valley. We have a lot of experience in municipal parks and recreation and performance spaces. We key in on durability and flexibility in a lot of our work. We want these buildings to last. We hope that they do. How they grow and they evolve over time is very important so that you maximize your dollars. And like I said, you will have the commitment of all three principles involved in your project throughout the entire duration of the job. You know, I could talk about our firm and, and the, and the things that we do, but I think looking at our architecture kind of paints the picture of who we are as a firm. And we work exclusively in the Rio Grande Valley. We don't work anywhere else. And we do a lot of work in Harlingen and some of the most recent work is Texas Regional Bank on the left and I'll go around in a counterclockwise manner. I'm sorry, clockwise manner. The Harlingen School of Health, Health Professions on the north side of town. My, my church, St. Anthony's Catholic Church. You know, I was very fortunate and very blessed to be able to design our church, which you know, we've had family members in funerals there, family members married, married there, so it's very special and dear, and dear to my heart. You know, on the north side of town, we have Tropical Texas Behavioral Health. We've done five buildings, I believe, for Tropical Texas, which kind of shows you the, the repeat business that we have. This one actually won a national design award, so y'all have a national design award winner here on the north side, right next door to the, the fire station there on, on Loop four ninety nine. And, and then we work with other banks too, like First Community Bank, another homegrown bank. Where we did five buildings for them in the past fifteen or twenty years. In the area in general, the greater Harlingen area, we're doing a brand new San Benito Performing Arts Amphitheater and Anatorium. And so y'all have an, an amphitheater component to this project. And so we'd like to show you and highlight that project and you can see it on the right. The right, upper right hand picture is a rendering of the amphitheater as it's up against one of the buildings. And it has a courtyard in the surrounding area with a raked, a raked lawn so that everyone has a nice view. Treasure Hills Elementary, I'm sure Mr. Mesmar's driven by it a couple of times and seen all the construction that's going on out there. And I understand it's difficult for people to get around and it's growing pains for, for the school district. But that's ultimately what it's going to look like in the right hand corner. Both my kids and my wife are there. They both went to school there. She still teaches there. And Harlingen High School, which is on Frank's, I was alma mater, we, we graduated together at Harlingen High School. And we did a black box theater there ten years ago when we spent about, I guess about sixteen million dollars. In every building on that campus, there was, for every letter in the alphabet, there was a building. So, you know, twenty, twenty four buildings, well, we touched every building on that campus. And then in the valley in general, I'll, I'll just mention a lot of work in Brownsville for the school district there, Brownsville Academic Center. Tropical Texas Behavioral Health, that's their West Lico facility, which is also an award winner. They've given us the latitude to design completely different buildings, which has been kind of fun for us as architects to be able to do that. The city of Harlem, city of, of South Potter Island, we did the city hall and police station there a few years back. And then West Lico, which is another design award winner, the Texas National Guard Armory. So enough about us, except to say that we have done some work for y'all too. Particularly in parks projects, the Harlingen Performing Arts Center, which is on the same property we're talking about today. And White Wing Stadium a few years back. It doesn't have a, a team today, but it was a very consequential building a few years ago. And we feel very lucky to be able to, to be participants in that job. Pendleton Park renovations a few years ago, we, we put a really great facelift on, on the pavilion and a track, very, a track component that you have here in this job too. So we built a, I guess it was a half mile track. It's been extended to a mile, I think now today. And then, of course, we, we refurbished, I think, one, two, three, four, five, six courts and then, and then a a lot of new courts and I think y'all are in the middle of a, of a new effort to, for a clubhouse today. I'll let Luis take over and talk to a little about a, a project that, that has some of the same components you're, you're talking about today.
Thank you, Mike. This project is really was a really nice project. This is on about fifty seven acres. Twelve baseball fields for the youth baseball program from Cat City, McAllen. The interesting thing was it was, it was a stockpile of dirt that they would bring from all different projects they had, so. So we had, we had to excavate all of that, take it off the site and then reuse it wherever we could. But we designed, we designed a concept and the concept was, was really to be able to have a designation for each one of the fields. And so basically we named them by different, different, the quads would, would name differently, for example, the aviary. Those four quads were named after birds, his fields were named after birds. We had the, the maritime and we had sharks and stingrays and, and then we had the choparal and we had the names of the fields were names like Conejo and and Coyote Field. And then we also had a very particular field and that was the very last one that we did and that was inclusive field. That was done with the, the organization. It's, it's, it's an organization based only for children that are handicapped and so it was designed for them specifically. And that's actually, that was actually the last field. Everything was built around it and then the field got put in later because that was my expression for that. And the, and then we have those, those little ponds that you say there, those are actually not only detention area, but that's actually irrigation water. So we use that water to irrigate the whole field, all the fields, all the landscaping. We have pumps in the mechanical room on the top left. And so there's parking probably for about four hundred and fifty cars on the site. And that's used every season, it's used quite, quite a bit. And then there's a walking trail all the way around, meandering all the way around the site. And so we also try to keep all the natural vegetation that we could, like up at the top, all that was left natural. And over by the pond on the right side, kept, trying to keep as much of the natural grasses. So that is about a nine million dollar project. You can see here, the, 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 the sun shades had different, different shapes, kind of related to the quad name. And then the center was a wild horse plaza and we call that the the, we're ready for the, the restrooms and the concession area. So that's where they're, all the gathering happens. In the parking lot, you go to a ticket booth and go into the side and then there's wayfinding throughout the, throughout the sun. But spectacular sight.
I mentioned Tropical Texas, West Lico, because it has a component that's very similar to what you're doing here with your, your destination park. And, and that is a beautifully landscaped area. We, it's called a courtyard in this case, and you can see in the site where, where all the buildings are. Let's see if I can get the all the buildings are splayed in a, in a half circle with the training center and the four of the five buildings and then the middle is a courtyard. And, and, and every building looks out into this courtyard from different vantage points. And, and as you guys begin to explore what the amphitheater is going to be like and what the jogging trail is going to do for you. And the features that, that, that you're going to use to, to tell a story. I think it's very important that you think about site orientation and position of buildings. And you can see this yellow, this yellow arrow. It's very important, especially in South Texas, to worry, to, to worry a lot about the prevailing breezes in the summer. And so having the buildings, particularly this amphitheater situated in a way that the, the buildings can take advantage and funnel prevailing breeze in is very, very important. I think the other most important thing too is shading devices. You're going to use this facility in the hot summer sun. We all know what it's like here in the valley. And, and natural shading devices and built shading devices is, is very important and we did that here. You'll also notice too that, that in the middle is a blue meandering stream and that stream is what we call today, the fancy word is a bio swell. And bio swells are, are being used more and more predominantly. I think this is one of the first examples of that where rather than dumping all of your storm water into the utility as fast as possible, you keep that water. Let it move through the site and let it percolate into the soil and you use it as your water feature. And, and then, then there's a cistern, I'll show you some pictures of the cistern. This is on the left hand side, a cistern gathers all the water from the roofs, directs it into the stream. Here's the stream right here and it runs through the site. This is something that we very much would like to do for y'all in, in this project so that you can retain some of your storm water and, and, and use it as a, as a feature within the site. So we wanted to show you this. This also won a design award and just for such elements. This is a side kind of comical note, these orange balls are representing kind of in a symbolic way. The orchards that were there before, there was a large orchard field in that, in that section and McAllen is known for, you know, their ag research and such. And so this was kind of a nod to, to that. And I don't, how much time do we have left, guys? One minute, I'll let Luis talk just.
Very quickly, the Capable Kids Foundation was the other one to sponsor that park at the baseball fields. They also sponsored a park that we're working on right now for Vanguard Academy at Edinburgh. But they also, the, the director or the, one of the founders of that, of that project has also attended this facility. This is a monastery, it's an electric monastery in Rio Grande City. We worked on this project from inception when it was only an open seventy five acre field or area of wildlife and we developed it all, walked through all the fields to develop them, actually walked and marked the fields by foot with, with snake boots and machetes, go put it up. I wish I could go more, but we'll spend a little bit more later if we get a chance. I'll let Mike.
I just wanted to close by leaving you with a couple, with four little bullets of who we are. We have extensive experience in municipal projects and parks and recreation. I just mentioned South Potter Island City Hall, the McAllen Baseball Field and San Benito Performing Arts in the, in the, in their amphitheater. We're a local firm, we're truly a local firm. With local licensed architects here in Harlingen. Staff with professional architects and interior designers. As I mentioned, we've had seventy four years of experience. This long term presence gives us an unmatched, unmatched understanding of the valley's unique building practices. And it allows client, clients to maximize construction budgets, particularly in time of rising costs. Which we have a lot right now, rising costs. And then I also want to say again that you have our commitment as principles to be involved in the project from the beginning to the end. So thank you very much for your time. Any questions?
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Questions? All right. Well, thank you all very much for coming here and, and sharing your view on the park project. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. All right, welcome, thank you for. Being here today, but I ask you to limit your, any presentation to about fifteen minutes, and then there may be some questions. Or there may not be, haven't been. So far, but anyway, just go ahead and introduce yourself and and go ahead and start your presentation.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is David Monreal, and I am a partner with GMS Architects, joining me today is my business partner Rowan Gomez. And our founding partner Rudy Gomez is not present today, and you apologize, he couldn't be here tonight. Let me just start off by saying that. The groups that you've already, that have already come in are more than capable of doing this job for you, any one of the architects who are here today could do that. Hopefully, in our presentation today, we sort of explain why we think we're better positioned to do that for you, not just because we were the ones who. Designed phase one, but also because of all of the work that went into the master plan before we got to phase one. And all the lessons learned that we we we. We had to work around during the design, so. So today, we're going to tell you a little bit about GMS Architects and some of the past and current park projects and master planning experience. As it relates to Destination Park Phase Two Project. GMS has been in business for over forty years, we've done projects with multiple districts and municipalities and universities. In in the Rio Grande Valley. Our our design team is, we're going to stick with the design team that that did phase one. In the design team, we we have Ferris and Flynn from Harlingen Ethos Engineering, SSP Design. And GRA Engineering. I've also listed two important consultants that I think are going to be important to this particular project, which are the TDLR RAS Specialist. And a theater consultant or AV visual consultant that I think would be important to have in the design of the amphitheater. So again, I, we we design buildings, we've designed K through twelve buildings, university buildings. Municipalities, so we've designed high schools for Sherry Land, we've done maker spaces for South Texas ISD, we've designed medical buildings. State of the art gymnasiums, auditoriums, which M Theater is basically an auditor, an exterior auditorium. And most recently, the UTRGV ATSD Early College High School. So the main reason that we're here today is for phase two of Destination Park. Let's not forget that this this is a park design, it's not a, it's not a building design, so we want to. Show you the experience that we have in designing parks, we've designed parks in. In.
We designed them in Williston County, Cameron County. What you have right here, roughly thirty-four of the projects that we have, they range from neighborhood parks. St. Charles Park in Brownsville, we were awarded, we had awards for. We've done skateboard park admission, the Natty Williams Commission. For Cameron County, their hiking bike trails, their beach access. We're doing, actually, we're still doing work with their penetration building. And one of the smaller projects that we're doing with the county is also is now their. Mountain bike trucks, we're developing mountain bike trails in two of their locations.
So with most of these parks, they're designed with. Trails, soccer fields, redesigning of baseball fields, as Rowan mentioned, skate parks, pool renovations and pavilions. So. Right now, currently in the office, we're designing. A project for Cameron County, it's a lethal park master plan. It's it's a large areas, thirty-one acres that are going to be developed, most likely will be phased out in different phases. Which is very similar to how Destination Park got started with the different phasing. So in this particular park, we have trails, we have trail lighting. Community center, boat docks, ramps. Different site features that aren't specific to Destination Park, but the reason that we're mentioning it is is the scale and the size of this. Particular project and and how it relates to the phasing that that we started with with the master planning of Destination Park.
This is the mini park, Mini Cultural District in Brownsville. This is, well, this is going to be phase two and phase three of this. Phase one was the general landscaping along the linear park over by the Pebble Forest, for those of you that know Brownsville. On the lower left hand side, we developed one of the old residential lots. For food trucks and for outdoor dining. In the center, I'll say middle, middle left, we're going to have structures for. Outdoor farmers markets for the weekends, so so that way. Since this is in downtown Brownsville. You have, the only way, or I guess it's to encourage people to go to the linear one. And part of the downtown remodel, rehabilitation. Are to get people to move or to start using the park proper. What we're going to show on the next slide is the amphitheater setup that we have here. We're going to have a berm setup for seating. Obviously, we're going to have walkways around it, and then a grassy field, so that when there's events, you can put chairs there or have people. These halls, the actual cover stage as or part of it, we're reusing an old loading dock that was there. And then we're adding to it, and the stage itself is going to be probably between twelve hundred and thirty minutes.
Which brings us to Destination Park Master Plan, so back in twenty sixteen. Our our firm was the one who worked on the original design and the original master planning, so. With in helping staff, we we piece together all the design elements that we're going to go into it. And I think part of why we're showing this is to show where we started and how phase one. Sort of evolved into something that was a little bit different, and how we had to pivot on on a on a couple of things during design. But this this image basically represents the the five phases of of the of the master plan for Destination Park. So in designing Destination Park Phase One. We started that project in late twenty eighteen, designed through twenty nineteen through the summer, we bid it out in the summer, and we started in the summer of twenty nineteen. It was fully open just a couple of months ago in twenty twenty-one. But as part of phase one project, we did have already included the trail, which we did as an alternate, so it's been designed, it's been thought about. And it it was not accepted at the time, so we only did the south portion of the park. Which we think has been highly successful, I think at the time, there wasn't a lot of traction for this particular park. I think that's that's changed quite significantly. So we feel pretty proud of what we ended up with, some of the structures, you know, again, listening to staff, needs, wants. And the park sort of shifted to around to sort of fit. The park design and the trees, the trees were very important, some of the structures had to be moved around, and we didn't knock down a tree, one tree that was was in the park, actually. In order to design the phase one structures. So again, these are some of the finished product for phase one. So the other, the other portion of phase one that we think was was successful is that now there's sort of a nighttime field to the to the site that was did not exist or before. So these are some of the nighttime images, and now with the amphitheater, I think it's going to be more of a of a nighttime venue. So part of phase two, the portions of phase two that are left are the trail, which we've designed in in phase one and bid out as an alternate. And then the all inclusive field and the amphitheater, and those are the two locations on the on this on the site itself. So first, the trail, as I mentioned, it was, it's already been previously designed, I think some of the important things to consider are. Some of the existing electrical lines and utility lines that are there, drainage is very important, we've got existing structures that we've got to design the trail around, which we which we did. And then, so there are some images, I think the original design had a concrete sidewalk, and I think we talked about value engineering that to crush granite. Which which may bring some of the cost down for that particular portion. For the all inclusive field. As I mentioned before, as part of our park design, we've redesigned baseball fields, softball fields, so we've done these fields before. We've done artificial turf, we've done track surfaces, the rubber surfacing, the port in place, which the all inclusive field will have. But again, some of the more important issues that I think are going to be important to this particular phase are ADA accessibility. To and from that particular field, and not just to that field, but from the existing structures that are there. You know, the parks on the other end, the all inclusive parks on the other end, so connecting all of those are going to be important, so that's why I mentioned the the use of our ADA specialist. The subsurface drainage also is going to be important, we're going to have to look to see if the storm drain lines are going to be able to handle capacity for the drainage off the field. And try to solve that particular design problem. The amphitheater. As we mentioned before, we we had that almost as an alternate in phase one, it got taken out, so we've done a little bit of legwork to figure out where it was going to fit, how big it was going to be. In order for it to fit in our master plan. So I think two important things to remember for the amphitheater are going to be the auto visual aspect of it. What types of events are you going to have, how big are they going to be, how much power is that going to require? And then the seating capacity, what kind of seating are you going to have, is it fixed sort of seating, is it lounge seating, how much space do you have? Do you anticipate people bringing blankets, those kinds of questions are some of the things that we've already thought about that we need to bring back to the group and. Sort of work on that particular design a little bit more to 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 fine tune it. So as part of what, part of the study that we did was SSP Design, who's on our team, designed the amphitheater at HB Park. They designed the the tiered seating and the amphitheater, so we went to go visit that, we've sat down, we've looked at some of those those issues. And how it relates to our site, we also visited Trazlago's Amphitheater with with your staff to understand that size and that seating. And then we looked at some acoustical aspects of of the stage acoustics and the and the and the seating itself. So from the shape of the type of structure that we're going to use to whether the seats are semicircular. Those were all things that we we've sort of already done some legwork on to fit the current master plan and phase. So. Taking some of those ideas, we feel that the design obviously should fit. The existing phase one master plan, it should use the same context, the contextual architectural language that we're using already, it shouldn't have a tensile structure. Above it for acoustical concerns. And so we we've thought about a few things already as a starting point to get going on this particular structure. And again. The ideas and some of the things that we've learned. Come up with a few, a few concepts. And just understanding that the amphitheater is going to be used at night for different functions and concerts, it's going to have a nighttime feel to it, we're going to have to. Design sightlight to and from to be able to. Enhance that particular area and have it fit into the rest of the rest of the park. So in closing, again. Because we've done some of the fieldwork before already, we feel that some of the important things to think about for this particular phase. Are going to be the accessibility aspect of the park, some of the drainage issues that we're going to have to resolve for the actual all inclusive field. The amphitheater seating capacity and what it is that you are going to try to accomplish and the kinds of events that you're going to have there. And then the other two factors that I want to mention are just material availability right now and delays. Those have become impactful in things that we've done and that we've seen and that we've did, like, construction costs are through the roof, steel, wood, all of that, everything has been impacted. So I I I mentioned that, I'm sure you all are aware of it, but as we move forward through this next phase, that's something that we're going to have to be all cognizant of. As as we start to possibly get to bidding. Trying to build this. So with that, that concludes our presentation.
So how is it then? Is that something you propose to say? With knowing what the costs are in another. But having some kind of. Adjustment for that same. Like you said, with the concrete, that's rest granted, that the options that you will draw. Are minimum value engineering, just because of that fact. Because it's nice to show it right now. We can afford it right now. And 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 the. That's my concern, it's how do you affect, I mean, I know you've already mentioned it, but you found on design it. Hold it in mind already.
I think that's a good question, I think so, so to answer your question, yes, I think the discussions will be. Here's option A, and this is, this is where we want to start, but then here are the other options where we may end up. Are you okay with B and C option type of scenarios? Yes, yes, yeah, no, all of that would have to be discussed before we go out to bid, just so everybody's on the same page, but. The other thing that we're doing also on some of the other projects that we're designing is now, I mean, it's become so much, so. So important to try to tie those costs down, that let's see, our structural engineer, we have a building, they started calling around all the. The structural steel suppliers, calling the Joyce manufacturers, like, we're getting on the phone now with some of those suppliers to try to find out, if we get in line right now, how long is it going to take to get our material? And we're making decisions before that happens. You know, before we go out to bid, and then and then we don't know what we're going to do. A time crunch.
Hey, anybody have any other questions? Add. Right, appreciate coming up this afternoon and giving us this presentation, we will discuss this item in our meeting, which starts at five thirty. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
All right, well, this concludes the workshop, so we are. Now that. Finished the workshop, adjourned for the workshop. Don't go anywhere.